There's sort of an urgency. I don't think we were, at least I wasn't aware that that existed. And one can claim ignorance, but we've just gone through an effort to get this thing out there in the public and correct. And if we say, yes, this is the correct one, which we're asking our, who's the person that now has to do it, our clerk?
Mm-hmm.
Clerk to certify that this is the correct thing. And then on top of that say, but oh, by the way, we're not going to do these things. We believe that presents a problem that should be corrected. If we are at least implementing or requesting a change, then we can say, we caught it and we're not doing it and we don't plan to do it. And we're making a change, an edit to the Articles of Agreement to reflect what we do, that's one thing. But for us to say, we've updated it, it's in there, we don't want to do it, but let's leave it in, that's problematic. So either we decide that this is an important thing and we want to start doing something we've never done before and have four more meetings a year, or at least two more meetings a year, or we make an effort to change it. I don't think there's anything controversial. There's nothing monetary in this. Especially if we're going to be aiming towards having an in-person meeting. I don't see this being a problematic thing. And we know about it. So we would like the board to consider tonight, because I think we're looking at articles, is to authorize a warrant article making these amendments to the Articles of Agreement. Is Liz, is Liz still there?
Liz is here.
I'm here.
Do Beth, do you or Liz want to comment further on that?
Liz, you got, would you like to comment?
No, I mean, I think mostly ditto. I just, I don't think we want to have an Articles of Agreement out there that we know we're not complying with. And to the extent that we can clean it up and do it relatively easily and have something that is, you know, valid and consistent with our actions, I think that's better than having something out there that we know we're not doing.
So my only concern is the length of time, the lack of public forums or ability to have a lot of public input from a January to a March date. Like, I feel like if you're going to look at the Articles of Agreement and make changes, even if they're just housekeeping changes, it's important to have public forums. So we can still do that, even if we agree to put this on the warrant. But I do think there has to be an opportunity for the public to understand and hear, whether it's a virtual or whatever. I just fundamentally, I just can't see it.
I'm not opposed to it.
And I actually think, I think that's actually in the Articles of Agreement in Article six.
It's not required, it's required for apportionment and something else, and for trying to get rid of the grades. But the RSA does not require hearing on changes of Article Agreement.
No, but it requires a reasonable opportunity for debate in an open meeting.
Right. So we're talking about having a meeting. But I would not be opposed to presenting this as a piggyback to the budget hearing. It would be nice to do it.
I just feel like it needs to be planned in a public way, in more than just our meeting. It needs to be drawn attention to because it is the Articles. The other thing I would say is, if you're going to change it, if we're going to change it, I don't see why we even have a year ending for terms. Why even have that? It doesn't matter. I mean, it's Brookline, one member, three years, one member, three years, two members, three years. We don't need the term dates in there, I don't think.
Only because Hollis has two in a year and we have to specify which year they get to do the two. It can't be arbitrary.
Well, it would, I guess. My struggle with that is that means we would have to do this every year.
Do what every year?
Redo these articles every year. We'd have to have a warrant on the warrant every year to change the term that ends every single year.
No, because I think it says effective with the election of such-and-such year, and then it follows. I think the idea is if someone resigns early, so then it becomes a one-year position to keep them on cycle. So you don't just like blow out Brookline and then start with a whole new cohort from one town, or Hollis, or whatever, right?
We can leave them unchanged, Holly.
But if you have 2022 in there, 2023 in there, 2024.
We just thought it would be less confusing to a reader to have.
No, you can change. I would rather see them changed. I just don't understand, maybe you can explain to me one more time. If we have year ending 2022, 2023, 2024, and next year we're in 2023, and that's what's in this document.
No, no, but it says effective with the election of 2021. So then those become three-year terms counted from that date. So it's, like in the paragraph above, it's trying to be, you know, longer than one year.
That's what they did in 2003, right. But 2003, okay.
Yeah. It's six of one, half a dozen the other.
Okay. I don't want your, it doesn't matter.
It's confusing. I would agree. It's confusing. Yeah.
Yeah.
So do you think we should leave it unchanged or change it?
No, I don't think you leave it unchanged because now you've got dates that are really outdated. But I hear what Holly's saying, which is, is there a way to just take out the dates completely so that you're not, so that it's not confusing when somebody else looks at it five years from now?
No, you can't change. You have to have a specific benchmark where the count, so you know which one is the three, is the three-year, is the two-person year.
Yeah, no, I agree with what you're saying. We think about, that's a question we ask all the time in policy or anything we do so that we don't have to continually change something. But I think this is unavoidable. It makes it so much more clear. And it's like Tom said, this is not a controversial change. This is a factual change. And it should be an easy one to update over the years. So like a very simple one, yeah.
Well, we shouldn't have to update it. I'm hearing we won't have to update that number, ever. That's what I'm hearing.
You will not have to.
We will not have to go into the Articles of Agreement and change the dates, ever.
Because the count always begins from 2021 going forward.
Gotcha.
I agree with you that I would like to either have a Zoom discussion about it before putting it, or I mean, if we put it on the warrant, or attaching it to the public hearing and discuss it there. But having a discussion about it so people understand what it is and the changes that we're making prior to discussing it at our meetings, I think that would get through.
Yeah, that's fine. Is the budget hearing expected to be a virtual?
I don't think so at this time.
Okay. Where's it going to be held?
Probably in this room. Oh, well, probably, if we expect turnout, we'll move it to the multipurpose or the gym.
So we have to make this decision tonight if we're going to make these changes and put them on the warrant so that we can average the.
Well, you still have time. This is just a draft warrant so Kelly can see everything. If you're asking about this, I would suggest, the action for me would be to go to legal and see how best to word the warrant article and how best to approach it during the public hearing. But I think we could accomplish it in a couple ways. We have a regularly scheduled board meeting still to come, so we could bring it back to the board meeting and discuss it again, so the public knows. We could put it as a warrant article and it would be on the public hearing. And then to Krista's point, if the board wanted to, we can hold a Zoom, you know, if we felt that was the need to get the word out. Because I think the piece will be, the warrant article without the document is the consideration.
Right. That's what I was hoping to, if there's agreement tonight, we could get the check, get it checked. I'm not asking that this language be used on the warrant article. I'm looking to see if the board wants to have it as a warrant article, in which case we can follow the steps you just described.
I don't think we need to have a vote on whether we want, I mean, we would vote once, as we do when we vote on the warrant.
We, I thought we did have to have a vote to determine whether or not we were going to have it as a warrant.
Well, we would do that when we vote on the warrant. Don't we have a meeting where we go to each item and we vote?
Yes, but I think what Tom's saying, what I'm saying is we just need some direction from the board because it's the board's articles. So if you want to add one, we can absolutely do that. I just need to.
Can we do that without a vote?
Well, no, I mean, we need direction via a vote to add it.
Okay, great. Liz, did you want to say something? No, okay. So we'll vote, so we'll add it as a motion to have you do it, yes. But you, Tom, either have a motion planned because I don't know what you're going to say. So you got a motion?
Yeah, you are now or in deliberation?
Nope, in deliberation, that's great. Okay. Any other questions on that? Terrific. So moving on to deliberate, oh, Policy Committee update, just, there's only one policy on the agenda this month. We have reviewed some. We reviewed advertising in schools. I forget the number of the letters, but have found that we're pretty, that was reviewed recently and we're very compliant with that. Beth is currently working on our concussion policy. It's a very significant detailed policy and we have new suggestions from the state, from NHSBA. So we're working on that.
That's how to give kids concussion?
How to give kids concussion, no, no. And we are really stuck a little bit because our policy is quite lengthy and yet it's very different from what the recommended policy is. So you might see us try to do a replacement, total replacement of that. And then finally, we have, was there anything else I was supposed to update on? I can't remember now. I don't have a note.
Hey, Krista?
Yeah?
Community use of school.
Wasn't it you and I way back in the day when we were drafting that concussion policy?
It was a committee, I thought, according to the notes.
Yeah, Dr. Capetta was involved. There was a, there was quite the.
Well, yeah, and Beth is working with our, you know, multiple people in our district, trainer, you know, coaches.
School nurses.
Athletic nurses, everyone, to kind of look at everything, principals, all of that. So it's just to let you know it's in the works. And then the other thing, as Tim just pointed out, we're also still working on the community use of school buildings. We have that with Jim O'Shaughnessy. He's supposed to be reviewing because there's a lengthy list of rules and regulations and we want to make sure those are legal. And there's also significant comment about protesting in that. And so we need to make sure that's, that we've got some things that we're working on. So there's a lot of things that are going on in policy, but the thing that we're bringing to today is actually a deliberative item. So we're going to, yes.
We had student conduct too.
What?
Student conduct, JIC.
Yes, student conduct is still working on that.
Being hatched out.
Right.
Does Cindy want to be a part of it?
Yes, can you call her so Cindy can be part deliberations? Once you get Cindy on, we'll move on to the class rank policy.
That's a lot of ground.
What?
Out of a lot of ground.
Did I? Did we? You people are so good at moving things quickly. It's awesome.
Where is I there? All right.
Here's where we can kill.
What?
Here's where we can kill.
Well, I don't think so.
Only because we have the extra items.
Yeah, we have a lot of extras. Is she on?
That's okay.
So our first deliberative item is Policy IKC Class Rank, which is coming from Policy after having been kicked back to Policy. And this is our fourth reading. I'm going to talk about it before we actually make a motion to deliberate, just so that we can present it and then we'll make a motion.
Can you hear Cindy?
Can you hear Cindy? Okay. So we obviously kicked this one around a lot. The Policy Committee is made up of our two principals, Gina, Krista, Beth and I. The most important piece to the Policy Committee is that we get rid of or eliminate announcing top 10. That was something that has been really important from the Instructional Practices Steering Committee. That is, the top 10 committee voted 11 to 1 to get rid of top 10. That was the language that was the focus of those two committees. And that was the language that's been the focus of the Policy Committee. Our sticking point is clearly we have an exception related to the military and members of our committee feel really strongly that that's what was there and that was not really part of the committee discussions and it's been there. So we had some questions last month related to the statement, not the military thing, but academic achievement will be recognized at graduation as per procedures outlined in the Program of Studies. So we talked about removing that statement or keeping it just as academic achievement and not putting in the Program of Studies. But since the Program of Studies is an electronic document, we can add this language related to academic achievement into the Program of Studies tomorrow if we wanted to. Maybe not tomorrow. I don't want to promise tomorrow, but. So if you go back into your agenda packet, you'll find that, I'm scrolling backwards because I don't have my agenda front of me. Rick has provided us with what a Latin honors program would look like, just to give more clarity to the public and to all of you what that, what's been proposed. And the Strategic Practice Committee didn't meet on this back in February of 2020. And came up with these cutoffs, if you will, thresholds to meet, to achieve, to be recognized in some capacity at graduation. This does not mean name called. It means recognition in the program, potentially accord. And I just want to give clarity and understanding of where these numbers come from. The highest honor would be summa cum laude, which would be a student who obtains a 4.2 and above. The reason for that number is that the GPA, a GPA of a 4.33 would be an A+ in every single class that the student has taken for four years. But that can be achieved without any weighting. You do not need to take a weighted class to get a 4.33. You can take just, you can take all classes with no weight and get a 4.33. So we wanted this to be attainable from anyone in any situation. Any student taking any type of class who's achieving at an A+ level, in all of A, A+ level, could get that summa cum laude. And so it doesn't, there's no, you don't need to manipulate your classes. There's no game playing. You take the classes you want. You just have to do exceedingly well in them. And that is why there's three levels. The next level down is a 4.0, just going .2 down. And then we go down to a 3.8 for cum laude. And keeping in mind that in order to become a National Honor Society student, you need a 3.7.
2.7.
3.7. So this is a little bit higher than the National Honor Society student because we are, you know, we want to make this special, an achievement, and a goal. Again, the reason the Latin honors system works for those of us in policy is because it is not competing against anyone else. It's just reaching for your best efforts and your strongest efforts. It is still focused on grades, but it gives people an opportunity to kind of push themselves. As a reference, we pulled up some other Latin honors program, you know, numbers from various colleges. And this is what we're throwing out there. The reason to keep it in the Program of Studies and to not put it in policy is we can see how it works and what we are seeing from it. What are we seeing? So that is sort of where we are with that piece of the policy. I'd like to have just a quick, you know, response to that and then we're going to make a motion to try and get this through. So.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Tom.
Are you, at last month's meeting, there was a request from some, it wasn't mine, so I'm not, about getting some additional information about what the academies require. Was anything done on that?
I think our answers from the academies have been, I don't remember if there was a request, but I don't think we did additional work on that. Our sense was it's two and two. It's like, we've spoken to five, I think.
It was three and two, or two and three, but it was still, like, what came back is it was very subjective depending on who you asked, like who the actual representative for our school was. It wasn't, it's not coming from, like, the top. It's coming from a representative.
There are admission reps, right.
Just a pool, yeah. It was a pool where, like a general sense, and it kind of gave us the answer. It was very mixed. The answer was very mixed.
And I just want to say, we've had this on our docket for months and we've received a few emails regarding this, I believe. And if, in terms of public input, we have heard from more people wanting us to make an exception for the military than people who haven't. However, we have not really heard from many people who want us to keep the top 10. But so that's just, and you know what? Here's the thing. It comes down to for me is I'm going to go either way. So, but, all right. So I'd like to make a motion. I need someone to make a motion to accept the fourth reading and adopt Policy IKC Class Rank.
So moved.
Moved by Beth?
Second.
Seconded by Kate. Is there any discussion? Anything else?
I, you know, I've spoken my piece. I don't want that exception in there. I don't want it in there for the service model. But I feel so strongly about changing this and moving forward with this that I will still support this. But I've spoken my piece. I think, you know, we've talked about it in the future as we gain more information, then maybe we change it down the road. And I would really like to see that, but that's a down the road.
Well, as I stated in our last meeting and I stated in Policy, I feel strongly about keeping it because I do feel strongly about giving it to a top 10. I do agree with that. And I like the Latin's honor system that has been put in place and I support putting that in our.
Program of Studies.
Program of Studies.
Thank you. But I, being that we have gotten mixed information on the academies, I, one of the reasons, the biggest reason we did this, we didn't want to hurt kids anymore. We felt like the top 10 really was hurting kids in so many ways. And so we've had this in place, this exception in place for six years. And Rick has said there has not been one case, not one case where someone has come and said, well, the academies get to have the rank given them, so can we have it? So it hasn't been abused. It hasn't been misused. The people that apply to these academies have probably made these plans many years in advance. This isn't something that I think junior year, someone goes, you know what? Sounds good. Naval Academy, I think I'm going to do it. There's so much involved in it. And so I feel that I wouldn't want to risk the chance. And we wouldn't know, we wouldn't know that us not giving rank would hurt that kid. But if we're looking at two different applications and you're talking to, military people are looking at it. And again, we've been given different information and they're looking and they see all the box checked for one candidate and all of them except one checked for this candidate, I just wouldn't want to have somebody take that and go, all right, and just move on. And we would never know that the candidate didn't get in because the box wasn't checked or because they just weren't the candidate they were looking for. And I, we just wouldn't have that information. I don't think it's harmful to keep it in there. At least, I mean, keep it in until we absolutely know for sure there's no possible way they're going to do that. I just don't see the, I don't see the harm in doing it. We don't want to harm kids, except that maybe that small minority that are going to apply to the academies, we're going to take that risk. And I just, I don't think it's worth taking the risk. I just don't, I don't understand why we would want to take that out. It hasn't harmed us yet. I can't see as we change this and move forward, how it's going to harm us. It's one of those things that, I've been on this board for nine years. I'm a compromiser. I give in to a lot of things that I don't fully, completely agree with sometimes, but I understand the merits of them and I'm willing to compromise because of that. This is one of those where I feel really strongly about it because I just don't want to hurt kids. And I do, I just don't see the harmful part of it. And I, I mean, I really do understand that this might not be something that we need to put forward. But we've also been given information that other schools do not rank and they're getting kids in. So there, they have policies that say we don't rank, but we also don't know what that means. They don't rank unless they're asked for it, in which case they give it. They don't put that in their policy, but that might be something they do. We do know there are schools that are kind of doing that. And again, not to break the rules, but because that's how they kind of do things. So I just don't want us, because we are very much the rule followers and we follow to the letter of the law in our policies, I don't want to take a situation where we hurt a kid because we won't, we won't give in on that one. So that's my opinion. I, it probably will pass with my no vote, but I won't support it if we take the exception out.
So far, it's in there still. So we haven't.
It's in there yet. So I will vote yes for it.
It's in there now.
So Krista, just to be clear, you want it in?
She wants it.
Yes.
Is there any other comments? Krista, thank you so much for that. Are there any more comments? Because I'd love to take a vote.
Just in case you wanted my opinion.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I couldn't resist it.
I think at this point, we can call the vote, but it has to be a roll call vote. So I'll start with you, Krista, because I know which way you're going.
Krista, aye.
I think Cindy's on your desk.
Cindy?
No.
Cindy's no. Holly, aye.
Holly, aye.
Liz?
Liz, are you there?
Are you there, Liz?
Aye. Yeah, aye.
Beth, aye.
Kate, aye.
That passes 6-1. I feel like I should cry in celebration for that. Okay, Cindy got to hear that all. That's great. Okay, so I'm going to need a little help with the motions for the.
I can help you with that. I just, Liz, just, are you there?
All right, we got you. So we have a couple of recommendations for, so let's start with the first recommendation coming out of our non-public session.
I have a recommendation regarding administrative positions.
Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you.
Yes, I'm going to make the motion myself, if that's okay. I would like to make a motion to accept the superintendent's recommendations that Tim Grzon be appointed as the principal of Hollis Brookline High School effective July 1st, 2021, this year.
Do you have a second?
Second.
So that was a motion by Beth, seconded by Kate. I don't know if we need any discussion. I know I'm pretty happy about it. So is there some, anybody?
I just like to make it clear, although the word appointment is being used, this, there was an application process with interviews and the whole thing. This was, this was a normal hiring process in which Tim emerges the candidate of choice.
Absolutely, absolutely. Okay, so again, we need a roll call vote. Is there any other discussion? Yeah, happy. Okay. So Krista?
Krista, aye.
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Holly, aye.
Tom, aye.
Beth, aye.
Liz, aye.
Kate, aye.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Tim.
Thank you, everyone.
Could Tim leave? Yes.
Tim may be excused, but congratulations. So happy.
Thank you.
Continuing.
If you want to.
You can leave if you like.
Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much, everyone.
You are excused.
Get a new job.
Have a great night.
Okay.
I have another.
Sure.
Motion regarding, let's see.
Another situation.
Yeah, another, yeah, an employee leave. I'd like to make a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation to extend leave to a co-op employee.
A co-op, I think we have to say administrative.
Um, that's not what, and.
Okay.
Yep, I left it this way.
Is it, are we defining the length of the extension in the motion or not?
You can if you'd like. I mean, I won't go over what I told you, then come back.
I think we're good. Okay. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second, Kate, okay. Another we need to discuss this. All those in favor, I need a roll call vote again. Krista?
Krista, aye.
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Holly, aye.
Holly, aye.
Beth, aye.
Liz?
Liz, aye.
Kate, aye.
Okay, great. So that's 7-0-0. Okay, we need a motion regarding Articles of Agreement. Does somebody have a plan for how to make a motion on that? Holly's not making a motion.
I did not have that drafted, so I was.
This is your baby, Tom.
Yeah.
I move that we put forth a warrant article to amend the Articles of Agreement for Hollis Brookline Cooperative School District as proposed in the agenda packet, subject to review by district legal counsel.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Beth. Is there any discussion? Okay, I think we covered that already. So Krista?
Krista, aye.
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Holly, aye.
Tom, aye.
Beth, aye. Liz?
Liz, aye.
Kate, aye.
So that's also approved 7-0. And somebody captured that. Did you write that down? Well, Donald captured it.
Don.
Okay, so we still have the CVA and the annual meeting. We'll do the annual meeting. Do we have to do something?
I thought we didn't.
We're not doing that. Okay. I'm sorry. I take notes, then I run the meeting, then I get confused. Then, then I have people texting me that the video's not working. It's all just, it's a shambles here. Okay. So now we need a motion to, for the collective bargaining agreement. So did you want to present more or did you?
I'm going to make the motion.
Okay.
I move that the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board. I move that the Hollis Brookline Cooperative School Board, um, ratify the tentative agreement reached with the Hollis Education Association for a professional staff three-year contract for school years 2021 through 2024.
Are you done?
Yes.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Beth. Moved by Tom, seconded by Beth. Okay, at this point, Tom, would you like to present on that a little bit?
Sure. Um, going through some of the details, a significant portion of the contract revision are to correct, uh, language that is either obsolete because it was put into the last contract on a one-time-only basis, or to, uh, identify things that, that were not, have not been found to be what we're actually doing. Um, before you, you have, uh, a summary of the changes and unless there are questions as we go through it, I'm just gonna sort of hit on the highlights. Um, the first item is Article 5, which is staff evaluation. The current contract has a very long, involved articulated process that we don't use. Um, what the new language essentially does is it refers to the Professional Growth Master Plan, which is, uh, which has details and it is a state-approved plan. Uh, this language is, was based upon language being used in the Hollis School District as well. And it just, uh, it moves the evaluation process description outside of the contract to what is essentially a living document that is also state-approved. Um, moving down, and we, there were some items that need to be preserved for professional rights and things and that language remains intact. Article 8 and Appendix B is the salary adjustments. And real briefly, for school year 2021, uh, those eligible will receive step increases in accordance with the table. And those employees, um, and the, and the salary table itself will increase by 0.75% relative to the current 2021 salary table. Uh, for the second year of the contract, same, same applies, except the, the change to the salary table will be 1.5%. And in the third year, the change to the salary table is 1.75%. The dollar amounts associated with those year-one increases, a total of $228, excuse me, $228,316. Year two is $294,057, $294,057. Year three is $330,369. Those amounts will be stated in the warrant article. The, the lane change information, 8.3, is primarily just, just correcting some language which was causing confusion. Um, same with talking about the, uh, changing from per diem to, uh, to hourly rate because of the way that we pay people for partial extra days during orientation. That's an update. Uh, and, uh, one of the, the larger changes was Article 10.6, Section 2, where we are taking what we learned and creating the sidebar agreement to better capture what's done with the middle school schedule and committing it to the contract itself. Uh, it's, it's just massaging it to clarify the, um, allocation of prep time primarily. Uh, we have agreed to, agreed or offered to increase the rate paid when a teacher gives up their, um, their off time during the day to substitute for, uh, another teacher from $25 an hour to $35 an hour in the hopes that we will be able to continue to, uh, keep schools, uh, in normal operation during times when staff members have to step out or be out of the class. And, uh, the last thing noteworthy is that the provisions of this agreement will be effective July 1st, 2021, and shall remain in full effect and binding on the parties until June 30th, 2024. This language is consistent with the process of what's called sandbritization, which means that, that, uh, all terms of the contract are valid for all three years. This is the same process that has been employed in both the Hollis and the Brookline School, Elementary School Districts, but it does need to be, uh, acknowledged. Um, it is not a required element in New Hampshire and it is a negotiated element of the contract. Any questions?
Um, I don't have any questions. I think it's pretty clear. Anybody have, I do have a comment. I just wanted to commend you all for getting through this. It was a really short timeline to negotiate this and, um, you know, considering the pandemic and when we could start and all of that. And I want to commend you, your team, um, the time and effort you've all put into making sure this happens. I commend the administration. Um, and I'd also, um, like to say a positive thing about the teachers because this is a, this is, it's hard work trying to advocate for yourself and make sure that you are getting , um, needs met. And so I, uh, I appreciate everyone's efforts in this.
I do want to say that, uh, the team worked very hard on it and is a, a very good team. Cindy Van Connet, Liz Brown, and we had very strong support by our administration. Gina, Andy, Kelly Seeley were involved in all the negotiations. This was conducted entirely by remote. Um, and my thanks to the, the members of the, the H E A team. Um, they took time to both explain their positions and to carefully consider ours, which is what I think led to a, a successful completion of the process.
Great. Thank you. So at this point, we'll vote on the motion, right? So, Krista?
Krista, aye.
Cindy?
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Holly, aye.
Holly, aye.
Beth, aye.
Liz, aye.
Kate, aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I believe that's all the deliberations that we have, right?
Well, you were going to...
Was I gonna do anything?
Oh, I'm sorry. I, I wrote down the warrant underneath, we already discussed the warrant.
We did the warrant. We did everything. So I just did them in a little different order than what we had discussed.
Sorry.
Because I wrote them down. Okay, so at this point, I need a report out by the processes server and then we will be going into a second non-public, but you guys can all, so, um, go ahead, Tom.
This was an extremely packed agenda.
Yeah, it was.
And, uh, allowing for the, the items which were not anticipated in the construction agenda, we actually went faster than predicted. Um, we had a very important period of public input and that always involves time, but it's time well spent because that's the only way we could really operate. So I wanna, especially with, with dealing with those requirements and things, I think, I think you kept the meeting going really well.
Thanks, Tom.
And, uh, and Tim's not here, but I really want to thank Tim because Tim stepped up and, and really well represented all of his, his colleagues in some very critical discussions. So it was, it was a very good meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so at this point, I need a motion to go into non-public. We'll do this by roll call. Session presumed RSA 91-A, Holland G, 2, Part A, the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee, right? Matt, what is it?
So moved.
And moved by Beth, seconded by Tom. Krista?
Krista, aye.
Cindy?
Cindy, aye.
Holly, aye.
Holly, aye.
Beth, aye.
Liz, aye.
Kate, aye.
Okay, so we are officially in non-public at 9:29 and we will say goodbye to the administrators and I'm going to take my...